They won't come in if the vote goes. So we won't know for sure until we know it's gonna work.
This whole discussion will evolve as, as things move forward and so all those questions will get answered. They just can't be answered too late. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Zane, state your name and address, Zane.
Zane Francis Scott, 0214 Ramwood Street. Just one quick question, do we kind of have a ballpark estimate how many people use the Y from Seward or, you know, Seward County address?
Was it two hundred units, three hundred units? And yeah, I will attest to that. There are so many people from Seward that I see at the Fall of YMCA, especially during the winter, using the pool and the water aerobics in the winter. Swim lessons and things like that. Amazing. So yeah, you get, I mean, that's three. And when they say unit, it's either a person working. Yeah, if those guys would stay here in Seward.
Are we good? Are we good? Am I good?
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have a presentation by Seward Trail Kiosk Committee. Greg, you wanna start this off?
Yeah, I gotta give another presentation, hold on a second.
And slide number three has a hyperlink, so we'll have you click on that and then we'll actually go to another clickable slide.
How do I get this one up? Where do you want me to go first?
Uh, yeah, you go to the view.
Alright.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay.
No, you're fine, go ahead, you're good.
Yep, so Jonathan Jenk with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership, and I have with me this deep thing, a number of interns from Concordia University who have been working with us over this last semester. And they were gracious, actually, another classic Concordia partnered with us the semester before to start to take our trail activities plan forward. They'll introduce themselves individually as we each have a section of this presentation. The good news is Jana did most of my work, so we'll, on the intro to this project, so we'll go to the next slide. But she already covered that this, this plan actually came out of the Wellness and Health and Wellness Summit that was run in 2020, the two summits. There were three priorities that came out of that. I do wanna say a couple of quick thank yous before I actually get into that. We already acknowledged Chris Bonkey and thank you for her work and partnership with Four Corners Health Department. And then also wanna say thank you to Adam Bodie and City Parks and Rec, they've been awesome partners. We actually gave the same presentation to the Parks and Rec Board and they were gracious to give us unanimous support to move forward with this proposed plan. So tonight we're coming before you to ask for supports to the Seward City Council specifically for the Trail Activities Plan. You go to the next slide, Greg. So you can see this was one of the three priorities that came out of that summit. And so specifically, we'll have each one of the Concordia interns talk about different sections of the Trail Activities Plan. And obviously, we have the 2.7 miles, but we're thinking about the future when we would have a seven and a half mile loop around the community. So with that, we'll go to the next slide and I believe that's where you'll click a hyperlink.
So while I was voting, my name is Brenna Breschallis. I'm a first year student at Concordia. I was put in charge of mapping the potential trail and some of the amenities that might be included. So this just kinda shows, if you're going to the next slide.
Click that very button, Greg.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, so, so the blue is the, the original trail and the red is the potential addition. And the blue trail is 2.7 miles currently. With the addition, it'll be about like seven and a half miles. So we're looking at potentially putting nine different kiosks. It's not necessarily, like, we wouldn't necessarily have nine, these are just like nine potential spots that if we identified, it would be good on and off points. So if you go to the next slide. Then we also have four potential locations for exercise stations. And again, like, none of these spots are set in stone or, you know, the just quantity is like the amount that you have, but it's the idea of what it might look like. So the next slide. And then these are potential dog weight stations. And there's actually one already on the bottom right. That's a dog park right there, and so there's already a dog weight station there, but I put that on there just so we could see all of the locations. So if you go to the next one. And then there's also an interest in putting bike repair stations, and so what that would look like, it would include like an air pump and next, wrenches that are like attached to this like pole it almost looks like. And so I was looking at, I put a bike too. So yeah, you wanna go to the next? So that's kinda what it looks like, it's what we put all of them on the map all combined. And then you wanna go to the next one? So here, these are just like some of the reasons why we might put the things that we put in those locations. So this one, it's tourists is the main reason, you know, the flags, the parade of flags is right there. The next one. And then there's the campground right here, so we get quite a few campers over here. So, yeah. And then the fairgrounds, and actually something that's kind of interesting, I went out there and shot some ground footage and I didn't realize like how extensive the fairgrounds was. So that was just like, yeah, I thought it was a really cool place to like have some of these locations added over there. To the next one. And then this, you know, it's the suburbs here, so lots of people live here. And then there's also a plan to put more houses, like in the next ten years, I believe. So, yeah, it'll definitely be a good on and off point here. Yeah. And then of course, there's the park, so lots of people live there. So they have a place to have some kiosks, and obviously, exercise spots or something like that. And then of course, the Concordia University campus, we have a lot of students there, they're on the trail, so having this lot there would be nice. And then this last slide is just like if you're like more street oriented or something like that, you can kinda see where things are about laid out in terms of the streets.
So in terms of some of the costs, as I understand, we're probably gonna be buying most of the stuff new. The only thing that we could potentially build would be the kiosks. As we see there, the bigger ones have a roof, they could potentially have a donor's bench on there too. And then the smaller ones are pretty simple, they don't cost near as much. And at the bottom, we're looking to build about two big kiosks, mainly by the parade of flags and probably at the park. Of course, that's not set in stone either, depends how much donor money we get. Small ones, those go basically everywhere else. Otherwise, that just breaks down the cost of most of the stuff. I know with the workout equipment and everything, buying those new comes with warranties and stuff, which limits our liabilities for that, or people getting hurt on them, whatnot. So, yeah, if there's any questions on that, fire away.
Next slide.
Alright, so I'm Gage Smith, and this is just like a kiosk design that we created, I think, that we think will catch the attention of each, each Seward citizen wanting to come check out our kiosks. So first, on the top left, I was thinking if we did like a history of Plum Creek Parkway, just like what we're doing nowadays to develop the park and what was all invested into the creation of this new Parkway that we're doing. And then to the right would be the list of sponsors that we plan to go after, after we get permission from the council. Right? And, but, so, and then the flyer section down to the left, I thought it was nice to have like a little flyer section 'cause it would introduce like newcomers to our town and be a nice little thing to show people what, what is there to do around Seward. 'Cause coming from Colorado and then going at Concordia University, my co, my coach said it was a sweet park to go around. And I love the University of Columbia, but I didn't really know there wasn't Seward. So the one back home always had the flyer for me to, when we moved there, to go interact with the towns like that, so I think it'd be nice. And it could introduce like, like the Wellness Center, like it'd be a great spot to, to ask people to show up for, something like that and vote. And then the middle was like Brenna's kiosk maps to show everybody what the map would look like, and then there'd be additional new stations. So that is just one of the stations we think, we think would be the two stations that we liked from the design. And then there, we were thinking like a QR code at the bottom, and that would just be like a list of workouts other people could do. And I talked to our strength coach Brenner, and he would be able to write like workout programs for the school, and yeah.
I'm Sarah, I'm a senior at Concordia. So basically, we're just asking if you'll partner with us. The activity project goal is to improve the livelihood of Seward citizens by creating a connected city and an enjoyable way to experience Plum Creek Trail through educating them about the history of the park, providing them with upcoming events and displaying new amenities. So basically, if you just help promote like the healthy community and like support activities for ages like six to seventeen or even beyond. And then if you do approve us, we're gonna like develop relationships for like sponsors and kinda like set a whole like brochure and everything. Put contact down, text. And then, yeah, so if you guys have any suggestions or questions or feedback, that'd be great.
Do you have any questions or feedback from the council at this time?
So as I understand it, you're basically looking to get sponsors for each of the kiosks, is that kind of what you're thinking? And then what about the, the activity stations, I guess I'll call them, like, is it exercise equipment kind of, right?
Yeah.
Yes ma'am, so we developed kinda like a budget of what's each partner would get. So we were thinking like a minimum of a thousand dollars would put their name on the sponsor, on the kiosk or if they wanted to put it on the spa, on the station. So we were like involved in on the station or on the kiosk. And if they did wanna buy the big kiosks, like just have their name on it from the sales for their business, it would be a minimum of five thousand dollars. So that's how we would go pursuing, uh, different businesses in Seward.
And I'll just add to say, as Adam has done the budgeting, that would pay for the park asset itself. As we've talked with Adam and his team, ultimately, we'd have to partner with the city to do the installation, but the park asset would be paid for on the front end with the partners.
Greg, what's the protocol like to do something like this? What would you, would you just?
I, I think right now, again, these are general ideas.
Right.
They're looking for insight to move forward and continue to pursue the project and present it to you. But no hard commitment until they start fundraising and then we would define final locations, go get final costs, and then bring all that back to you. So I think this is a project that some of them, I mean, just based on their ages and what they're doing, they're gonna hand this off potentially to the next group of Concordia students. Some of them may still be here, some of them will hand it off to another class, and they'll keep running with this. But they've really taken it upon themselves, this is the first time I've gotten to see them. I was in the other group that did the, with Jana, we did the kayaks and, and those items. And so this one's really been Adam and Jonathan and this group's work. But I think they're looking for, is this something, these ideas, again, a high priority item that was identified in the summit? Is this something the council would like to continue to pursue? And they'll put those wheels in motion to continue working towards that.
Could you do it as like families could donate them, it wouldn't have to be a business?
Yeah, absolutely, I, whatever.
On the forest case?
Whatever sport we can get for sure, we'll definitely talk about it. It doesn't have to be like a minimum of thousands either, it could just be like, oh, if you, we'd have different options for how they would be, receive a credit for sponsoring the kiosks like that. So we just think it'd be a fun, interactive way for businesses in Seward to partner up with Plum Creek. And it'd be a good business opportunity too with the newcomers coming in trying, using it like, oh wow, this is a sweet park, let's go check out this place and sponsor the kiosks.
Where is the timeline of the actual trail?
They're finalizing the design now. We turned in the documents the other week for the last supplemental for design and engineering. And that will do the final design. The big one on that one was the fairgrounds will get redone. 'Cause the county fair ag society back in the fall voted to approve a route through the fair that they were okay with. And so they finalized that, and then there's one other element in regards to design. They'll come back this spring, design that, we'll get approval to design it, design it out, and then probably prep everything potentially. It depends on right of way acquisition, there'll be a little right of way acquisition. If that can all be completed in the next year, they could go out as soon as the fall for a bid. They could be building this next year if everything laid out perfectly. Let's be honest, with right of way acquisition, as we know that goes, you might add another year. And then they would construct in twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, or twenty-three.
So I think to that point, what we wanted to show with this project is that we have the ability to obviously start in the existing 2.7 miles, but we wanna show the future as well. So just trying to be visionary in that sense and, and also connect with people to say, hey, there are opportunities to, to build amenities based on community feedback that they'd like to prioritize this.
Would you like to get this project going through the current?
Yep.
You know, how you have it displayed on the current two point, whatever, would you like to get some of this going? Or is it's decision to do the whole project and then once it's completed, you do it all?
Um, I, I think we would try to start with the existing trails, and of course, that's based on community partners, whether that's, you know, you know, from individual donors or from businesses or other partners. The sense is that I think there's opportunity and, and I think the mayor said that it's one of the most used amenities in, in the city. And so to me, this would be an absolute compliment to that, and so to me, it would make sense if we try to move forward, if we have the funding and support to do so.
The other good part about, again, I wasn't a part of this group, so it's fun to hear the work that they did. The other good part about starting with the current trail is, we can implement some of these ideas, like the different styles of kiosks and some of the other stations they're talking about, the exercise equipment, and then we can monitor it. Does it not hold up to weather? Do people vandalize it a lot? Do they, you know, are people reporting back, hey, I read that you guys are having a 5K run for the run to St. Lo. I saw it down at Plum Creek Park, I'm totally gonna do that. And we'll get some feedback and we'll figure out from some of that by implementing it now on the current trail, what works, what doesn't. And then we'll stylize that out, and then when the full loop is done, then you can implement it with some of that testing basically taken care of.
Yes.
Just wanted to add, you guys have, you know, obviously done a great job. And something that excited me through talking about this, I've been asking the panelists, is the focus is a family-friendly trail activities and engaging families of all ages, all abilities, all interests, backgrounds. And so the kiosk is like the foundational piece to that, right? It's the part where you can communicate with people, whether they're out of town, in town, on what they can do, things that have come up that are potential for the future or geocaching, you know, the library, they wanna share a story, upcoming things that families can participate in. So this, what they're sharing today is just a great foundational piece for expanding, how can we make the trail already a great asset, make it really a family-friendly, light place for visitors.
Thanks, Chris. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna do like a vote of support or we just all give the thumbs up?
Unless you're, if you're adamantly against it, speak now or this, this project will continue to move forward with their efforts and the efforts of their comrades at Concordia as they pass it forward. But I wanna say, thank you guys so much. I know all the work that we had to do on the opposite side in the other committee and how many meetings and hours of work and research and things like that. So I can only imagine what you did to prep for this. So thank all of you so much.
Thank you guys for your time and consideration.
Again, thank you for the presentation, good job everybody.
Thank you. We'll go and get started on the next item, this is item number three, ordinance, many of the Seward municipal code, chapter 205, alcohol beverages. Article 2.18, hour of sale, two minutes hours of sale between 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. And I can tell you a little bit about this, these statutes, I actually wrote them, so it turns out. The, this came up mainly because the Fourth of July is on a Sunday this year, and somebody looked at a calendar and one of the local bars were, were asking me questions about whether that this could be addressed at the council level. And so I said, yeah, we can put it on the agenda and have this discussion with the council to see what your thoughts were. The Sunday sales used to be called blue laws, and these were across the country in states that dictated when like businesses could be open on Sundays and mainly not open on Sundays. They had in some states, for example, you still can't sell cars on Sunday. And so a lot of it came out of, for religious purposes, they had these laws in place to either limit the products or, you know, the businesses, businesses themselves. As kinda like the day of rest type of thing. Now, a lot of states have gone away from those. They've either rolled them back, limited their scope, or have repealed them in their entirety. But that's why, you know, when it comes to alcohol being one of those products, you cannot sell hard alcohol before, I believe, noon on Sundays is what Nebraska state law is currently. And so we, oh, I'm saying we, when I was in the legislature, working for the committee that addresses alcohol issues, it initially came up with golf courses wanting to sell Bloody Marys and such on Father's Day, Sunday morning, which is super important, obviously. And so because of that, the legislature's left the law in place, but gave the locals the authority to, to alter it or repeal it. So that's what the, the Sunday sales is in regards to. Tulip Close was a different animal altogether when that came up. The legislature senators weren't concerned about making it a statewide law. And so they, again, gave it to the locals to decide if they wanted to extend the hours at 2:00 a.m. And also requires a two-thirds vote of the council. So that's gonna be a separate issue tonight if, if we get to that point, because we have only eight of our, or six of our eight members here.
Seven.
Seven, sorry, Alan, I apologize.
Okay, I'm a few minutes.
I'm just gonna keep going. You're, you're five minutes late, you're dead, you're dead to me. I had six in my head, 'cause I was doing the math before the meeting started, thinking, okay, how are we gonna make this work? And, and that came up, and, and I can just tell you, you know, anecdotally, when that happened in Lincoln, there were concerns that you would have all these drunk drivers at 2:00 a.m. or 2:15, as opposed to 1:00 a.m. or 1:15. What they really discovered was that the people that are at the bar, it's just, you know, one of two things happened, either they trickled out more gradually. So they, a lot of, not all of the people at the bars, this is only mostly downtown they're worried about, kinda trickled out. So it wasn't like everyone left at 2:15 now, it was more they just kinda trickled out more gradually. The other thing that would happen is, in some cases, they just wouldn't go out as early, they would go out an hour later, or they would adjust their quote-unquote drinking window. And so that was part of the ration, it's part of the anecdotal evidence of, of what actually happened, once it went into effect. But again, a lot of bars don't want to be open until two on a regular basis. And I think you will discover that it's more of a, of a special event type situation where they may want to be, this year, if, if the Fourth of July didn't fall on a Sunday, I don't think we would be having this conversation, 'cause I don't know if it's that big of a deal. But it was brought to me, and so that's why I'm bringing it to you for your consideration and discussion. And so I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or entertain any comments you may have on this.
My first question was, so are we only looking at the 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.? Because it's a Sunday, are we extending 2:00 a.m. indefinitely? Because there's two editions here, right?
Yeah.
Being allowed to sell warnings and then how late you're supposed to.
Yeah. And they, and they can be, you know, amended anyway, and we just went with the absolute for the draft. Absolute being it would be 2:00 a.m. any night, they wanted it to be open till 2:00 a.m. As, and then the, of course, the Sunday morning would be every Sunday morning unless you wanted to limit that for certain.
We already have beer and wine, correct, for Sunday morning, we're only talking about hard alcohol, right?
Historically, I mean, coming out of prohibition, historically, spirits is always kinda treated differently.
Right.
It's taxed differently, it's viewed as the creator of evils, if you will, in some cases. And so it's, it's always been treated legislatively differently. But you're right, the other, I mean, you can go out, out to Walmart and buy beer or whatever they want to sell in the morning.
I, I was just trying to make sure we have two, how do you wanna, how do you wanna discuss this, I guess, a question?
Well, I, I, as it's, as the ordinance is right now, they're, they're combined in the same ordinance.
Okay.
So if, if it would, and if the council wanted to move forward with the vote, it would be introduced, we'd have, if you wanted to waive the three readings, then we would go to the vote. If the vote failed to reach two-thirds, I think we'd have to come back and amend the, the, probably amend the 2:00 a.m. hour and see if the other one would go with just a some majority, is that right?
Yeah, there was no clean way to offer both items and two items for you to vote on, and so this is how we did it.
That's why, because it's two items and one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure I meant that.
So Josh, if I read this correctly, like the package, this is the old ordinance where it has secular days and Sundays.
Yeah.
Separate. So what we'd be doing is eliminating the Sunday bar and just everything would be the same?
Yeah.
So where's the 2:00 a.m. play again?
Where's it coming to play?
Yeah, where, where do we get the 2:00 a.m. from?
Probably 1:00 a.m.
Right.
Yes.
So with the extension to 2:00 a.m.
Every night.
Every night?
Well, it's, well, every night that the, that the liquor license you would want to be open till 2:00 a.m., they would have that option, based on this.
And this is just.
We couldn't go to three or five.
No. No, state law only gives local municipalities the ability to go to 2:00 a.m. And technically, it's 2:15 for pickup, just like it is 1:00 a.m., 1:15 for pickup. So it's exactly what it is now, it just extends it one hour.
This is specifically for the Fourth of July weekend, or this is for like indefinitely?
The way this is drafted here, it would be indefinitely, meaning you'd have the Sunday mornings, it would be every Sunday morning, and the 2:00 a.m. would be every night. The way this is drafted, unless the council chose to amend it. But rather than try to guess what the council would prefer, we just went to the end of the options. And if the council wants to walk it back, they could, but that's how it's currently drafted. But again, keep in mind, I mean, not every bar in Lincoln's gonna be open till 2:00 a.m. In fact, not every bar in Seward is. Yeah, like maybe they have a reunion or a wedding reception or, or, you know, it's a Thursday, I mean, it can be whatever reason, all this does is give the licensee the option of being open till 2:00 a.m. Doesn't require them to be open till 2:00 a.m.
But then it also gives the ability for them to serve liquor on a Sunday.
Morning.
Six a.m.
Yep.
Any, any Sunday. So, you basically really can't, they start serving at 2:00 a.m.?
No, it has to be close between, well.
Two and six.
Yeah, right now would be one and six, but if this were to go forward, it would be from two to six, you wouldn't be able to sell alcohol. That's state law. So, you have to stop it, if this were to pass, you'd have to stop at two, but then you can start at six, including Sundays.
And that's just hard alcohol?
Well, everything else is already.
Because beer, we can already do that.
Yeah, yeah, you'd only add our hard alcohol to the list of alcohols, which would be beer, wines, spirits, the three categories, based on taxation. Does that make sense? Is that clear as mud? Would you, would you? Obviously not very well because I don't understand, I could have a better trial.
So, is our first, our first thing to do is introduce the ordinance?
Yeah, well, yeah, unless there's any questions about this or a desire to amend it, then the next step would be to introduce it, you still have opportunity to discuss it after that point, but I just, I just want to make sure the council is comfortable with what this would do compared to what's currently allowed under state law. Because this is one of these odd times where there, where the statute isn't a statewide statute, it's, it's a statewide standard, but then the locals can decide how they want to adjust it and it's not common across all laws. It's just that, since prohibition, the Supreme Court of the United States basically told states they can, they can regulate alcohol how they see fit and they have a lot more control and discretion over the alcohol laws of the state, which was in this case then passed down to the local level.
You know, a little too much about the alcohol laws.
I, I assume our chief sitting in the back of the room doesn't have an opinion or does have an opinion?
No opinion.
No opinion. Alan just introduced your ordinance.
Jail's open 24 hours.
Make sure that's in the paper, please.
Okay, here we go. The ordinance has been introduced. An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter 205, alcoholic beverages, article 2.18, hour of sale, two minutes hours of sale between 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. To repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in tampered form, the ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2021-11 and the title is hereby approved and in motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Move by Schmidt, second by Camper.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Again, this is ordinance number 2021-11, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
For who?
Second.
Moved by Beck, second by Hendricks.
We have a motion and a second, now is there any further discussion?
As proposed, it needs six to pass because of the statutory requirement for changing it to 2:00 a.m.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number 2021-11 be finally passed and adopted? Please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passed. Next, we have the updated job description for Civic Center manager, followed by the updated job description for Civic Center assistant.
And I'll just note, the ordinance that follows after that is also related to it. We were working with the Civic Center Commission over the last couple of months to look at updates to the positions located in this facility that weren't. And so, the commission's looked at those and also was given notice by our current Civic Center manager, Todd LaBelle, that he is resigning later this early summer. I think he has other opportunities that he needs to work on and that he wants to have his focus in and so he's going to stay on through the time it takes to hire a new manager. Also, as we note, every time we have an opening potentially coming up, we want to relook at these and so we tasked the Civic Center Commission, working with the administration to review both of these. One of the big ones they had been working on is they felt like they needed more than a live-in caretaker, they also noted that there are some complications with having a person living in a public building, you know, landlord issues and things like that. And so, what they came up with is they really wanted two new positions, the manager is less of a change, but I'll note that the manager changed by removing a lot of the technical stuff, so being able to fix like HVAC equipment and plumbing and things like that, doing the, the lawn work that Todd was doing, so being able to trim and mow and scoop snow and stuff like that. What they wanted to see was take away some of those more laborious things and have the person more inside the building, here to support the users of the facility and continue to promote it, schedule, get more people coming into the facility and utilizing it and then helping with a lot of like the technical A V and a lot of the other stuff that we've paid a lot of good money to add to a lot of the conference rooms and things like that. And so, by doing that, then something happens to HVAC, just get ahold of one of our local HVAC contractors, you have an electrical issue, get an electrician, you have plumbing, same thing. And then, when it comes to some of the outdoor stuff, looking to either partner with the city directly to have some of our public properties crews that are just half a block away, come over and assist with some of the outdoor things. We're starting to help with snow already this past year. And then, what can be done by the city, also looking to have private entities come in and help maintain some of those items if the city can't help with it. That adjusts the focus back and having somebody, the other one is you'll see with the assistants is, there's going to be a lot of work with scheduling assistants. And so, the live-in caretaker, adjusting into what you'll see as the assistance positions, what they're looking at is having anywhere from three, five, six assistants, they would be part-time employees, they would come in on evenings and weekends as we have scheduled meetings, open the facility up, do some general custodial work, set up chairs, tables, things like that, and then basically be available and sit up in the office if somebody comes up and goes, hey, we're trying to have a meeting and we're connecting to the TV and we can't get it figured out, can you help us? And then, other than that, they kind of envision it as being kind of a college job where they envision Concordia students could help with that and then sit up in the office and work on homework, you know, do those kind of things. Once they get all of their job duties done in the building for the night that they're assigned for, sit up there and just be available to the public. And that way, we can also have, right now, if the caretaker's gone, there's no coverage, there's no other person here at night. And so, are they trapped here every night because they have to cover the building on weekends and evenings? And by having a number of part-time people, then the manager can really schedule those people, adjust the hours out, not burn people out, and it's designed to be roving, so as students move on or if we have older members in the community that enjoy working in the facility, I mean, it's not, as long as you can move chairs and tables around, I think that's the most laborious element of it. Getting up and down all the stairs and stuff kind of could be a labor. But that's what the Civic Center Commission envisioned in making the adjustment, it's really about continuing to press the usage and information that we understand about the Civic Center forward. So, that's, that's how they've decided to realign it, moving into the future. No adjustments, the ordinance is coming up, all we did is adjust the title, there's no pay adjustments at the moment, the manager pay and the assistant should be similar to the lines that they're on now. Questions?
Yes, can you explain the Civic Center and like, if there's a commission, where does the city, like, why is the city responsible then?
The city, the.
Explain that.
Yeah, little history lesson, the Civic Center was given as a gift by the Landworthy Trust many, many years ago. In the will, it deeded the Civic Center, the building and the land it's on, to the city. At some point in time, the city council organized the commission to oversee and direct the Civic Center.
And the trust?
Within the guidance of the trust. Now, the trust document literally only says, make sure it's used by nonprofit agencies and organizations, it's the home of the chamber and it should be available to the public and it's not for personal use. So, that's why we don't have wedding receptions here and individual things, it's always related to either a government entity, a nonprofit entity, educational, we even have business items in here, but they have to be not for the purpose, if you need to come in and work with your people to do an H R training, that works, but if you're coming here to sell them a product, you can't do that because you're trying to make funds within the confines. And that's one that's been kind of hard to adjust over time. But that commission basically oversees it, but it's still run by the city, the trust, which has all the assets that generate the income that pays for the Civic Center, owns all those assets, but gives to the, the city, there's also, I think, is it the school or the hospital, Jonathan? Who's the other?
Hospital.
Hospital. And so, all of our expenses for the Civic Center are approved by the commission, that's basically the trust verifying it, because the trustee sits in with the commission and they review all the expenses. And that's the check off by the trust, it still comes to you, the money's distributed to the city, you guys still verify all their claims, ultimately, the city owns.
But they rein, the trust reimburses 100% of expenses, so there's no cost to the city.
No, not anymore.
So, these positions are all paid for by the trust, they're trust-paid positions, but this is how the commission that oversees and guides the trust.
They're put into the city, so they have some, some sort of structure, is that kind of purpose?
The commission? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They still do a normal budget like any other division, it's in your budget book, we'll continue the budget process within this year, they just get help from the commission in the budget. Also, I just note, the Civic Center Commission did meet last night and approved these as well, as a formal commission, so.
Did you need a motion on these?
For each one, I would need a motion to approve the job description.
I'll make a motion, go through the first job description. You're not separate.
Yep, moved by Coltonen, second by Camper.
The motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Item number five, correct.
This is the job description for the assistant that I just kind of explained.
I'll make a motion to overturn this as well.
Moved by Coltonen, second by Beck.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Item number six, ordinance amending the comprehensive pay plan, changing the title for the Civic Center assistant, correct?
Getting beat to the punch, yeah, we just changed the title of the assistant. There you go.
I'll read the ordinance.
All right, the ordinance has been introduced. An ordinance to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to provide for a title change for Civic Center assistant, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date, such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in tampered form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2021-12 and the title is hereby approved and in motion to dismiss with statutory rule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Oh, sorry. Who'd motioned in second that, sorry? Motion by Beck, second by Wilken. I was already on to the next item in my head, sorry.
Wilken, yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Again, this is ordinance number 2021-12, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
No move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Camper.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, again, the question, should ordinance number 2021-12 be finally passed and adopted? Please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
This is the final ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion to make all the ordinance a part of the permanent record.
Second.
Moved by Coltonen, second by Schmidt.
A motion and a second, please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Coltonen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Item number seven, consideration of letter agreement amendment number one with Olson for professional engineering services related to a new downtown water tower.
Let me just put everybody's name by it, I'll start. We had already contracted with Olson to do the, some of the design work, but now as we're moving into a potential location, we need to do some environmental and other geotechnical work to make sure that location is one you want to pursue. And so, this would be a letter agreement for those services. Mike, you can fill in any other details on that, if there are.
Sure, so about 10,000 of this, 15,190 dollar amount is for the due diligence work, about another 3,000 is for the additional survey work, more complicated area, requires more survey than the other location down here, horseshoe, and then we added 1,500 dollars to have them assist us with a nice logo that we might hang down on the tower. So, that's the sum total of the costs, the total is about 3.5% of the expected project cost, relatively low, a lot of that deals with the design being primarily done by the manufacturer that selected ultimately, so that, that keeps engineering consulting fees down. So, all in all, a, a low fee, I think, for the amount of work we can.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council?
Will we be seeing that logo before?
Of course, there'll be, there'll be a lot of push.
It's a placeholder.
Yeah.
The word logo is a placeholder.
I, I would note, a question that council member Beck kind of asked in discussions we've had previously on this, one of the things that Mike and myself have been working on, mostly Mike has been able to take this one up, is there are funds available through the state that we're trying to get all of our information into and get in line for that would give us an opportunity to secure a 0% interest loan on a project like this and also potentially have a, up to a 14% approximately forgivable element? And so, we're pursuing other grant funds and stuff, but we've been running around, our heads cut off, so there's only, only so much you can grasp at, but we kind of found this one and so we're, we're moving very quickly. This may also lead to some other opportunities with water wells that we're going to be working on and then obviously the wastewater treatment plan, so.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Move to the group.
Second.
Moved by Miller, second by Hendricks.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Wilken?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Do you get, yeah?
Yes.
Again, I jumped on that. We have, Reece, you have your report?
As much as I want to keep Tim here all night, I think the majority of what we've been working on lately is a lot of stuff that you guys have heard about tonight, so I will answer any questions you have. We are doing follow-up on Councilmember Hendricks's request for some ADA parking, and so that will probably be our big priority once we clear it tonight, is starting to go back and look at that, and then finish up the parking map that we were developing from kind of the community discussion on downtown parking, and so we're putting the fine-tuned elements on that, and then we'll get a draft down.
I know somebody that can, there you go, let me get him on us.
Any questions or Greg?
I have a question, can you give us an update on Waverly Road on a timeline more specific?
They won't start again on the city portion until school's out, so, because we have driveway issues with the middle school, so they're going to wait on that, and then they'll restart on the city portion, I don't know, do you know the timeline when they would move to the rural?
They have to do it at the same time, so dirt removed from the city portion is going to get filled into the county portion, and so part of that work will be kind of current.
Can we talk to those neighbors, because they're asking me a lot of questions, I just don't have the answers.
So we have a, we, because of, we don't have a reconstruction meeting set up yet, because the date is third of May, we expect to, in about a month, have a meeting on site, and then get a schedule and get an idea, then we'll be able to inform those residents what the plans are. Typically, though, they maintain on a daily basis access to and from those properties, you know, it's not ideal, sometimes it's a bit muddy, but generally, everybody gets through, usually construction crews are familiar in rural areas, working with residents.
So we can tell them if there'll be an update at the end of May?
I would say by the third week of May.
If that's not sufficient, let us know.
That'll be fine.
Hey Greg, and there's been some dirt work done on the north side of Waverly here recently?
The gas main is, I'm sorry.
Well, I wanted to like, run with it, like, see where we can.
I've got a question, because people get excited when they see dirt movement in Seward.
Mike is correct, Northern Natural Gas is currently moving one of their main lines,